If you join me in prayer and then we'll stand up for the pledge. Lord, thank you for this morning and Lord, as you tell us, this is the day that you've made. It's a beautiful day and it's another day of your creation. And Lord, whether it's cold, whether it's warm, rainy, snowy, whatever it might be, Lord, I know that you have intended for us to enjoy that.
You bet.
And so, Lord, we're just thankful for the weather. We're just thankful for the comforts that we enjoy and lift up those who maybe are struggling with heat or whatever it might be, just ask that you give them what they need and fill that for them, God, because we know you're a gracious, loving God. This morning, we just asked that you be with our meeting as we take up the agenda items before us and, and Lord, give us the wisdom to make the decisions that will best serve our friends and neighbors here in Leukle County. And Lord, just be with our workers out there today as they battle the cold weather and we're just thankful for their abilities and willingness to do that. Lord, we just love you and we thank you in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, we will not take up the minutes. We'll take those up at our next meeting. But we do have some discussion on possible action, both a ballot question regarding the online sales tax and we have just some general county business. And then I didn't get it on the agenda, but I wanted to also force to start looking at the senior tax freeze application, okay? So with that, we do have a couple of guests. So before we get into the meat and potatoes of those items, I would ask if either Ashley Mahin, our chamber director, or Emily Huckabee, the now president of the chamber,
Got it.
would like to speak to the commissions. I'm going to go out of order here. Or if you just want to enjoy the proceedings, you're certainly welcome to do that as well. And/or both.
Yeah, we didn't have any business ourselves. We just wanted to come and listen and be present and
Okay.
get out on, like you said, this blessed very morning.
Well, good, because I'm going to have a question then for the chamber as we discuss the first item. And that is a possible ballot question regarding the online sales tax. I did not print mine out, but let me, let me kind of set this up and maybe put a little background to it. The, there's no doubt that just the volume of trucks we see, whether they have different labels on them, whether they're Prime or FedEx or even the USPS delivering packages out here seven days a week, consumer habits have changed. So from the days where downtown Lebanon was the commercial shopping hub, certainly even before we had discount stores and big box stores, times have changed. Technology's afforded individuals the ability to shop online 24/7. It's convenient. Selections are oftentimes more robust than what they're able to find locally because as more people have shopped online, we have fewer options for them to shop locally. And so, the way that we can address that would be to ask the voters if they would like to support the online sales tax. Now, why is that important for the county? We exist essentially on a 1% sales tax, which is below all of our neighbors around this. Most counties have a 1.5%, maybe even some 2%. So we're doing, the county is doing good things with the monies that we have available. And, but we know that with sales tax flatlining, what we've witnessed over the last probably six months to a year and our first receipt of sales tax for 2025, we see those numbers stagnating, actually going down. So we're going to discuss the probability of putting this on the April ballot. The last time the county put this before the voters was back in 2020. We had a good run started, but COVID hit. The April election was, was changed to June during that timeframe. It just didn't seem appropriate to keep asking the voters for, to support this while there were so many other things happening in their lives. So I think it's time personally to put this back out before the voters. I understand the city of Lebanon is putting this before voters. We have needs, just like any other political subdivision. If you visit with our sheriff, he would, he would tell you that there are needs that he has in his department for public safety, for the safety of all the citizens here in Leukle County. If you ask our residents out here on the 500-plus miles of county road that we take care of, I think they'll tell you that they would like to see some improvements made. And the commission has taken that upon ourselves to work on that the last two or three years diligently. And our new commissioners are very committed to that as well. So we have, we have needs. We believe they're legitimate needs. We believe we've demonstrated our ability to show our citizens that we, we're not frivolous with our tax dollars. We use those wisely and we invest those to provide those level of services. I see many other communities looking at this. And so what that tells me is they're experiencing the same thing we are. A declining, not necessarily a declining retail environment. That could vary depending on your location. There's always hotspots in the economy, but there's generally, if you see as many counties and municipalities placing this on the ballot, that's really strongly indicated for me that they're experiencing the same thing we are here in Leukle County. So our use would be, would be very basic. It would be public safety. It would be improving county roads. And there's always general county business that needs to be taken care of. But certainly the needs here at the county, I think, would be public safety, law enforcement, and trying to make some headway on our county roads. So I'm a strong supporter of this. And I would put it out there for discussion. And then if the commission decides at this meeting or whether we come back Thursday, which may be a possibility. I know there's ballot language that we may have. I need to get a copy of it. And we may need to discuss that. But I think we have a draft ordinance that we can review and then we can take action from there. But then my question to the chamber is going to be, we, from the commission's standpoint, we can provide information. So we, we can put out pamphlets. We can speak to civic organizations. We can speak to individuals. But as commissioners and elected officials, we cannot advocate for. We can only provide information. I think it'd be very helpful if our chamber and other civic-minded organizations would recognize the relevance and importance of this and they would be the strongest advocates for our community. I come from the small business sector and, and I know how important it is from a mom and pop standpoint, when you're competing against not only the big box stores, but then now you're competing against the likes of Amazon. And it becomes a big challenge. And, and those, those mom and pops, they, they're the ones that are chamber board members. They're the ones that serve our community in Rotary and Lines and Optimist and Kiwanis. They're the ones you see coaching the, the youth sports teams. These are people that are committed to their community and they're able to do that if they're given a level of playing field to compete with these other entities. And, and I think that's another important part is just, just leveling the playing field out there and allow our local merchants to be able to have that competitive arena as opposed to where they're having to collect the, the sales tax, but the out-of-state vendors aren't submitting that. They're not collecting it, except for the state of Missouri, by the way. But they're not collecting on behalf of Leukle County. So we have to go before our voters and ask the voters to impose this. It's the same tax rate as our current amount, which is a half-cent general revenue. It's a half-cent county development tax and it's a 3/16th dedicated 911 tax. So for all those reasons, gentlemen, I'm a supporter of this. And I would like us to consider it again. I think it's time and I would just open it up for discussion.
You bet. No, myself, I'm also supporter of it openly because times and stuff have changed. You know, we've got to evolve and go with that. Or we see that the stream of how everything is working. My wife herself gets a lot of stuff off of Amazon and orders things. I've got packages at my house daily, you know, and she's constantly on her phone saying, "Well, this arrived, that arrived." And I'm like, "What, what do you mean?" But, you know, and with that, it doesn't help drive our community because we are losing out on that end of it, I feel. So yeah, I'm definitely, like you said, personally, I'm an advocate for it, but I can't do that publicly from the office that we hold. So I'm a supporter and I believe we need to get it on there. And as you stated, Randy, that with the chamber being a good advocate, I feel that they're going to be because it's still, we're still just one community. We're not separated by anything there. City, county, all that needs to work together on this to make it work. So that's the way I feel.
I'm personally for it.
I think you have a board meeting. You want to get your, like, verbiage together and maybe information. Maybe you could have one of you guys come and present that and talk to us about it.
Sure.
So that way we can clear up.
When, when's your board meeting, Emily?
Four o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay.
And so we, we sit downstairs in the Boyar Public Center. That might be a really good 10-minute brief kind of situation.
So you said?
Come up with a plan of action.
The 28th.
Yep. We'd love that. I'm glad we were here today.
Well, and I will say too, an opportunity that I see for the public would be a business builders' luncheon, maybe. March would be a good time if, if we had somebody to come and speak, whether that was, I know you can't advocate, but if you can give the information, that might be a good opportunity to get that information out to more of the public as well. I know you've spoken to Optimist Club in the past, I remember that. So that I'm kind of thinking along those lines, that might be good.
We would take advantage of those opportunities because it's that important for our community to, to know and to understand why and then what they could expect if they're, if they're supportive of it. And I'm, I'm optimistic because just in the last four years, I've, I've seen how even, even the, the sales taxes continue. We certainly haven't seen that growth the last three, four years that you would, you would, I believe, expect. And then one of the other things that I think we have to look at too is drawing people to Lebanon to shop. And I would, I would suggest that's one of the goals of the chamber, is to draw people here to Lebanon. You know, I know you have a lot of great events that you schedule and, you know, you have your first Fridays and, you know, your calendars always look full to me. And, and I know in hearing Ashley make presentations before that, you know, there's always something going on in Leukle County. You don't, in the city of Lebanon, you don't have time to catch your breath sometimes. But, but here's the thing, we need to bring them here. I look at our neighbor to the north and I look at some of the growth that, that could take place in, in a northern county. And I look at that and, and I want to try and keep people here. I want them there to go to enjoy that, those activities. But I, I want them to shop here. And so having more here, more variety, more choice, then, then I think that definitely is, is in our favor. So having an emphasis on retail here in our community and, and I know that organizations are active in, in pursuing leads. You know, speaking with Brian at Ready, they're always pursuing those leads that come in. But, but, but those are going to be so critical for us, so.
We can get it in the right hands.
Okay, all right. Well, we, we appreciate that. Now then, I did not print out for myself any ballot language draft, so I would just, have you had a chance to look at that?
I've read through part of it before things started coming from together on this one.
And this is a draft that we're reviewing, probably much like what we had back in 2020. It has been approved by legal counsel. It is not in its final form. This is a draft and it gives us, it states the statutes. It gives us the authorization to ask the voters of Leukle County to approve this. So there's a lot of just general housekeeping in here, so to speak. And then there would actually be the ballot language itself. And that's what I would like to, to have some discussion on. Generally speaking, the political subdivisions, the counties and cities that have been successful going before their voters, they have, not in all cases, but probably the majority cases, they have specifically designated where the revenues would be allocated to. So again, in our case, I think the two biggest needs, and if you look at our budget, which we just have out there right now for the public review, when you look at our budget and you see the two biggest portions of that, it's law enforcement and it's, and it's rolling bridge. And so those are the two, two biggest things we have. So I don't know, if you had any questions on that proposed ballot language or not?
Actually, don't have any myself as far as at this time. And I do believe we need further discussion to see how we're going to present that, to lay that out for, that for the safety aspect of it. I think it's one of the biggest things for me
Okay.
to put out there.
All right, that's what we're doing right now. So let's try to narrow that down so that we can maybe have a language drafted and ready for approval. This has to be certified no later than next Tuesday. Is that correct, Linda? Okay. And if you want to think about that a little bit, then we'll bring that back up here shortly. If you want to meet Thursday, we've talked about maybe having a Thursday meeting this week possibly.
So this is all fairly new to me as far as reading ballot language and, and understanding it. Where, where in here can it be interjected or put in? This is for safety, law enforcement. And I don't really see that in this language down here.
And that's where I'm getting lost in the trees too.
Yep.
So this is a draft copy and this would be our ordinance that we would approve. And then we'll have the ballot language that would specify that, okay? So it, it can be a two-step process. You know, that we want to approve an ordinance and include what the ballot language would look like. So my recommendation would be that we think through that clearly, that we decide what that ballot language, how that reads. And then we put this on Thursday's agenda. Then we come back in here Thursday and look at it.
Well, I think it's very important to clearly state what we're looking to use this for. And we know, they know. And I think that's what you're proposing.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'll need a little more time to try to figure out how it would place me a little bit different, you know, one way or the other. But we want to sway them toward it, not against it, for sure. I don't want them to think we're trying to get in their pocket because we're greedy. You know?
I think the facts would suggest that we're very, very efficient with what we have to work with. Okay, all right. So we will, we'll bring it back, back Thursday morning and we'll get a meeting scheduled for 8:30 Thursday. That work for you?
Aye, sir.
All right. Next item I had on the agenda is a request for personal property tax refund. And this one is, a vehicle was, the wrong trim code was applied to their vehicle and they're asking for refund and it's the amount of $22.55. I'll let you look at the supporting documents and then I would entertain a motion to approve.
Randy, you've got a question.
Sure.
So the ordinance is something that, you're like, is it approved by the state? And then you say there's verbiage for vote. That's like, that's what voters will then see. And that's how they'll understand that compared to that.
Correct. It's the state statutes, and I'd be happy to give you a copy of this, but it's the state statutes that quote, they're quoted, that give us the ability as a county to put this out before the voters.
So then on the daily vote, that's when it says, would you like to vote for an increase in taxes? And then it says, it should support how the, that's how that would be.
That's the gist of it, yeah, yeah. This is the authorizing language that enables us to do it. The sell, the use tax back in Missouri, and then goes back to the late 40s or 50s. And, and the state probably about three years ago or so voted to collect it for the state after the Wayfair decision was passed that went before the Supreme Court. So the state actually collects their part. The, the communities, the cities and counties that their voters have, have passed this, which is well over half the counties now in the state of Missouri. They're able to collect it now as well. But last count I had, I think it was probably in the mid-'70s, the number of counties that had passed this. I seen just this morning on a media, Springfield Media outlet that the city of Ozark is putting this on the ballot for April as well. And I believe the county of Vernon is putting this. And again, Emily, I believe it's, it's an indication of the consumer habits. And I don't know, if I ask for a raise of hands, if anybody in this room would say they've never purchased anything online. I, I don't think I would get any hands raised, you know? Because that's, that's what we do now, unfortunately. So you had a chance to review this, I would entertain a motion to approve.
If I can make a motion to approve the reimbursement there.
A second.
I have a motion second to approve the refund for, in the amount of $22.55 on behalf of Edwards, individual that's requested that. I had a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Refund approved. Next thing is general county business. I know we've just finished our budget. It's out there for the public to review. It'll be there for the next 10 days. We'll come back at our January 28th meeting and, and that's when we'll approve it officially. But gentlemen, we're in general county business. So if you have something you'd like to bring up?
The only thing I really got is what we had talked about, a contract and stuff like that on the lease for a warehouse, which we discussed through budgets as well.
Okay.
So they went ahead and got something over to me, so I just wanted to bring it to the commissions. I think we've already got some type of, something going on that, but.
In, in my, my thoughts, Joe, are that in light of OEM budget and the conversations we had during budget, I would not recommend that we sign this lease. But I do appreciate the individuals getting that to you.
Right.
Because I know we discussed looking at alternatives. And when you inquired of this, that wasn't the discussion. So I know that that's changed in fairness to all parties. But it would be my strong recommendation that we don't execute this at this time.
Correct. And that, that's not what I was insinuating. I just wanted to bring that up because that was prior to budget when that was asked upon. To get something finalized on that, that way we knew exactly where we was. But I still think that we need to reach out to these people here and we need to figure out what our timeline is on that for still using that facility or where we're at, just out of respect also.
Agreed. Yeah.
So I didn't know if we want to put a, you know, two-month, three-month, you know, do a quarter thing. Gives them ample time as well. Give us time to vacate or, or we decide we want to do that.
Well, I think a minimum of 30-day obviously is in order. And if we can do any longer than that, that would be good. But I know we need to do a minimum of 30-day.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was kind of thinking myself that if we, you know, it would give us some time to clean up if we don't just do a quarter, just do that first three months. And then that way it gives us more time to figure out a few other things because as we all know, that I'm new here and still trying to figure out a few of the things that goes on. So I think that would be respectful. I would appreciate that if I was
Certainly.
those people as well.
Certainly. Since you took the initiative to do this, do you want to reach back out to that vendor and give them a heads up as to where we're at today?
Yes, sir.
And that we would give them a minimum of 30-day? I'm sure we've already, I'm not sure what their billing is. I typically, I think they bill this.
It's stakes in there. It's actually a six-month billing is what.
Right.
They typically do, so.
Right, so they would be expecting obviously January, because I don't think we pay. I don't know that we've paid this yet for six months.
That is correct, they have not, anything yet.
So my recommendation would be that you reach back out to the vendor and, and let them know that we'll be vacating that warehouse. But not a firm date yet.
Okay, so we're just going to try to run this by a month-by-month deal for the time being?
I think.
Or we're going to try to put a timeline on it?
Well. I, I guess I would ask to get input from the, the vendor. For us, I think month-to-month would be, would be better.
Yeah.
If they're agreeable to that, knowing that we'd give them a thirty-day notice.
Right.
We, we have some degree of confidence that we can have, have our equipment out there and, and, and to get that done. But. We haven't, we haven't touched the first thing yet.
That's what you were going to say, variables come up and then there you are.
Sure.
So that's why I was thinking if we had something to kind of hold your feet in the fire a little bit more.
Yeah.
Did you want to see that or just Jennifer?
Yeah.
So you bet, I will reach back out to them then and let them know where we stand at this time.
And Eric, I'll come back around, but is there anything you wanted to bring up at this point?
No.
Okay, alright.
I've had several compliments on taking care of the ice and snow though.
That's good.
Guys weren't working on Saturdays and they couldn't believe it, working at eight-thirty at night also. But they just, people was really impressed by that. So they tried to compliment me and, and also they gave me some compliments for you. And I told them that Eric didn't deserve any, but, you know, as well as myself. But anyway, I told them that was more the Roden, Roden Bridge crew that, that's all on them. We did not, you know, sit there and poke them and run hot shots up beside them. They, they took it upon themselves and take care of that for us, so just wanted to put that out there as well.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, and I, and I mentioned earlier before we started, that the senior tax freeze application that, that's coming up. I did not get that on the agenda, but I did mention it and I would like to have some discussion on that. Eric, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Alright, so last year was the first year for North Leaf County to offer the senior tax freeze to our citizens. It was well received, I believe we had a little over two thousand individuals that were approved for the senior tax freeze. This is our second year and we do know that the legislature changed some of the guidelines. That was in the original SB one ninety, now it was SB seven fifty-six. And going forward until it has another Senate bill number attached to it, we're simply going to refer to it for what it is. And it's a senior tax freeze. And so we did have to modify our applications in order to comply with the due language. Last year, one of the components, you had to be sixty-two years of age. And you had to show proof of social security eligibility. Well, that eliminated teachers, some teachers, most of them. That eliminated railroad workers and probably others. So we did have to turn down just a handful of individuals here in North Leaf County. Because, because of that, their retirement systems did not include social security. The legislature cleaned that up, they came back in the new bill and said simply age sixty-two or older. You, you still have to comply with the other components. You have to show proof that you own the property or have a legal or equitable interest in it. You have to have your last year's taxes paid, you can only claim one property. And you have to be sixty-two years of age or older. And then I think the other thing that we looked at last year was lots of times there were just individuals. So there might be a, a, a husband and wife. And maybe just one applied and, and, and that froze it, but perhaps it froze it. And we've simply put on there the spouse's name. But this year, in order to clarify that more, make it clear, is now we have applicant one and applicant two. So let's say that we have one applicant that's sixty-two years of age, they're eligible. But applicant number two is fifty-nine. You know, it would, that household would, would be frozen. But let's say something happened to applicant number one that was sixty-two years old. And when applicant number two becomes sixty-two, applicant number one's no longer in the picture. I gotta make sure I keep saying this, so I don't get applicant ones and twos mixed up. So then applicant two would not qualify because they, they hadn't been. So it would reset that amount when applicant number two became eligible. So there are just some cleanup things here. And then I have some, some housekeeping just internally. I met last week with Mike and Leanna. And we're going to tag-team this. We have an alphabetical list of those who applied last year. And so we're going to ask if the other commissioners want to share a day or an afternoon. Because we believe we can, we can do this in-house without incurring any additional expense. Other than the normal payroll hours that are involved. And so we'll set a desk out in the hallway. I, I have to give Mike and Leanna a great deal of credit. Matter of fact, all of the credit for putting this application together for our review this morning. And then also their willingness to, to help as we deploy this on February third, I believe. And so what we did last year, we had an individual stationed in the, in the hallway. And during rush times, either Mike or Leanna or myself or one of the other commissioners would go out and help. This year, we believe we streamlined it a little bit. We're hoping that everyone that applied last year will reapply this year because we know this year's a reassessment year. So it's very important that those who applied last year understand that this is a reassessment year. And if they don't reapply, then their, their freeze will be reset. So it's very critical, and I want to emphasize that, for those who submitted an application and last year it was approved. Please, please come back and apply if you're so minded to do so. So with that, with Mike and Leanna, I, I believe we can, we can accomplish this. We're proactively right now looking on that list to see who's already paid their twenty-four taxes. So we can check mark that off, so we can just keep streamlining this process. So when somebody comes in, it's, we're providing even a faster, more efficient service than we did last year. And by the way, somebody last year commented, said Randy, that couldn't be a government program because it worked way too well, so. So we're trying to even improve on that. So I would, I would want you to look this over, see if you have any suggestions or recommendations. And if not, then we'll, we'll roll this out on February third. And if you do have suggestions or recommendations, then we'll modify this and we'll still roll it out on February third. And it's due by May thirtieth of this year. And that'll give the assessor more time to work on her files, to get this done. So we're not just rushing there at the last, last minute. Any thoughts on that?
The only thing that I have is in question with applicant one and two. With two actually being, I'm just going to use your number fifty-nine and everything, so ineligible at that time. But the head of the household actually is eligible. If something happens to applicant one and applicant two still is not of age at that time to be sixty-two. Does that still hold that or do they have to go into the actual where it is until they get to sixty-two? And then they hit that break there?
They will, Joe, they will apply when they're eligible. So more than likely applicant one is sixty-two, it would be in their name, applicant, did I say applicant one?
You said two there again, but yeah, one is sixty-two.
Okay, and if applicant two's fifty-nine, then they probably wouldn't even fill that out.
Okay, they wouldn't even go into the applicant part of it?
Yeah.
Because that was my other question there, that if applicant two is still alive. Or applicant one is still alive when applicant two does reach sixty-two, at that point, does it just continue to stay there? Because they are of that age, do they keep that freeze that they had three years ago? Or do they have to then come back and redo again?
So currently, this is an annual application. So all applicants have to reapply annually unless the legislature changes that. So we'll be, we'll be taking this up in twenty-six based upon what, if there's been any modifications made. So those that, those that applied and were approved last year. Again, I'm urging them to submit their application this year. And then in the event that nothing changes, I'm going to strongly suggest that they keep. Because it's, it's going to compound over time, you know? Your initial year may not seem like a lot, but you know, ten years from now, property values are likely to increase. And that's when you're going to see the real benefit of this. And I believe if you keep seniors in their homes, it's better than, than moving them into some other type of, of housing. I believe you keep wealth in, in homeownership as opposed to not. And, and we know rentals are, are expensive. So I'm in favor of doing everything I can to help the seniors stay in their home. And, and this is just one small step in, in that process.
Right, well, I, I think maybe I didn't explain there or I, or I'm not understanding what you're explaining. If, if I did explain it right now. So applicant two, if they are not of age of sixty-two, there's no sense of even putting it on there. Because they don't need to be an applicant until they are of age of sixty-two.
That's, that's a true statement.
Okay, so.
But, but it's there, but it's there.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, they'll have to have a reset. Because if it does not hold that line of applicant one, once they get to their applicant one deceases at sixty-nine. Now applicant two is of age or older, they can't hold that level. So best for them to do is once they hit sixty-two is take off and become an applicant all of their own. Put their homes dead, if that, if that other person, they have to if they decease.
That would be a true statement.
Right, okay. Trying to clear that up, because some people are going to be mistaken on that.
Four years from now, she is sixty-two, he, whoever, the young's a party. And then they sign in on here. Do they get to take over applicant ones?
No.
No. Even if they get on this program while applicant one is still alive?
Correct, so let's say maybe a better example I could toss out would be for applicant one and applicant two. Would be myself and Linda, okay? We're both over sixty-two, as you guys remind me of most of the time.
He doesn't, I do.
So, and, and let's say something happens to me, okay? And it was frozen, both of us were eligible, Linda would carry it on.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
That's what it is, just go ahead and carry on.
Yeah, yeah. But there could be some value in having historical information for applicant two, even if they were not of age yet.
Yeah.
Eligibility wise. So I won't discourage someone from submitting applicant, as applicant two, if they're not of age. I would just say that if something happened to applicant one, you'll be eligible when you turn sixty-two. But there might be some historical information there that would be important. And maybe easier for us to some future date to even streamline this more, what that would look like right now. Guys, I, I don't know, but, but, but we would have information on file.
And then like you say, with legislators and stuff like that, they could change that. But if they have been in that household for X amount of years or been there or been on an application, you never know. They can change that to where they do, go ahead and get grandpa to do it.
We don't know.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, so I like the applicant two thing like we discussed before, no matter what the age is, so. I think it looks pretty good to me. I'm pretty good with all of it, the way that it comes out, it's pretty simple. That's the only thing there that I think might be some misunderstanding for somebody who may not be of age yet. So, which I think we can clarify that.
I think so, I think so. Alright, back to general county business. I had a item that when I did a walkthrough over at the annex the other day. That I guess I had overlooked that we need to address would be. MU has essentially moved up front, they still have a little bit of items to either dispose of or to get moved up there. We know that our sheriff's department would like to go ahead and move some paperwork over there. We're running out of storage here, so we'd like to get that as quickly as possible. But in doing so, I realized that the fair board still occupies an office over there. And they have, I'm going to assume not been notified. And I don't know. I guess I could ask Jennifer maybe, isn't her daughter?
Yeah, you'd actually go to Bailey, she is actually the fair board manager.
Okay.
You need to contact Bailey, which I have that information, just in case we need to.
Yeah, we, we need to because they still have personal files and, and they're still conducting business there. So we, we need to give them an opportunity to relocate.
Okay, I can, you know, I actually spoke with her yesterday on a couple of other things for the fair and stuff. So I can get ahold of her, do we have a date or something on that that we'd like a timeline out on that? Are we looking at anything in particular or just?
Well, I know the sheriff is anxious to.
Yes.
Get, get moving on that project. And they have some ability with some staff right now to, to do that.
Okay.
And I don't know. At one time, I think one individual is probably on their fair board mentioned that if they could just have a, a, a spot. Not necessarily an office, excuse me, but a spot up there in the MU extension. But that's, that's the annex building, that's, that's the county. So Joe, I'm going to let you work on that, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do on that and see where we go.
Report back to us. Public comments, items listed on the agenda.
Okay, just two questions, where can readers or residents find the budget to look at? Is it on this website, front page? Okay, awesome, and then the other thing I was just going to ask, what was the warehouse you all were referring to earlier?
We have a warehouse that we have different equipment in. We have some emergency response type equipment, we have UTVs. We've got an old Hummer down there that was, was given to us at some point in the past. We, and we, it's, it's probably a little larger space than what we need. And so it's a good time for us to do some housekeeping. And we're looking at budget items, and this was an item that stood out at us. That if we would do some housekeeping, that we could probably reduce that cost to the county. And so we anticipate having a cleanup day or two. And also finding a home for the. having a cleanup day or two and also finding, uh, home for the, uh, reduced amount of equipment. That we have stored there. Yeah. Like everything else with cost of, uh, insurance and, and taxes, uh, the vendors requested an increase and this has went up and justifiably so, right? Um, but, uh, as a result of that, it's, it's kind of made us take a second look at it and, and really match our needs to what we have. Any other public comments, items listed on the agenda? Now we'll go to routine business. Did you gentlemen have a, did you have any questions on any of the warrants that were processed?
No, I looked through some of that instead. So I'll see pretty well there for me.
Yeah.
Thank you ladies.
Shoot me a email if you don't care. Okay. All right. Thank, thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
The next item we have is a, uh, court order to, uh, move the, uh, interest that was generated. Uh, from the ARPA fund, uh, from, no, this was tax maintenance. I need to read, uh, need to get my glasses. Uh, the Leclae County Commission does hereby authorize Christie Card Treasurer of Leclae County transfer the total of twenty thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. From the tax maintenance fund to general revenue per twenty twenty-five budget. So I need, uh, you to look at that and then I need a motion and second to approve.
And the reason we're doing that, we'll have more for the budget on the twenty-eighth, but that one's already been moved. So we're to receive it. We're doing that.
That way you can receive it and hold it for that spot.
I make a motion to. Twenty huh? Four thirty-three seventy-three from tax maintenance to general revenue.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second the, the movement.
Okay. I have a motion second.
Yeah, that's just.
Any further discussion? Signal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Court order approved.
His court order.
I'll read this one before I say anything.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's good to move them when this is thinking. Yeah.
This, uh, the Leclae County Commission does hereby authorize Christie Card Treasurer of Leclae County transfer total of. Up to seventy-six thousand dollars from the county development tax fund to emergency management fund per twenty twenty-five budget. This transfer funds may divided into monthly or quarterly payments as necessary. Historically, we do probably semi-annual over there.
We do quarter.
We do quarterly. Okay.
I'll make a motion to do that transfer to the OEM.
I'll second it.
And a motion is second to approve the court order to transfer funds from CDT or from, um, CDT to OEM. Any further discussion? Signal, in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Court order approved.
We need to initial on this or sign on this one or initial?
Uh, initial, yeah. So if you or Eric had hired someone for Roden Bridge. Typically, that commissioner would sign there at the bottom and then the other two of us would initial there at the top.
Okay. That makes sense. That's, that's why I was in question because it kind of.
You just need to rate that order for what.
I was.
Yeah. Okay. Public comments, individuals who wish to make comments regarding items not listed on the agenda would be recognized at this time. Okay. None? Okay. And we've kind of taken up other business and now I would just go back to if anybody has any other general county business. That they want to bring up this time. So it would be my recommendation that, um, uh, on Tuesdays, if your guys are agreeable, that we would, uh, we would recess. And if something comes back up, we can, we can take care of it. Uh, and, uh, I would like to afford both of you the opportunity because there may be something that, that we need to do. We've talked about going out and looking at some roads. Uh, we have to be in session to do that. But at noon on Tuesdays, I would recommend that if we get done before noon. That, uh, if, if you want to, that we, uh, were able to be available. Um, and then adjourn at noon. Uh, I would like to, uh, recommend that we come back Thursday at eight thirty. Uh, to take up the, uh, ballot question, um, for, for a vote, for action. And also, uh, to review the final draft if it need be on the senior tax freeze application. And then also, uh, if we have, if we want to, uh, use that day then to go out and do some of our road inspections. Uh, and my schedule's open, but, uh, both of you, I'm sure want to look at that and see. If we want to do anything, uh, tomorrow, then I'll have to set up a different time. We, we need to get that out to the media twenty-four hours in advance. So if we want to do anything tomorrow, we, we need to get it out. If not, then it's Thursday a day. You want to do something. The sites come in for a couple of action items and, uh, and that'd be the extent of it.
As far as for me, for my scheduling stuff right now, uh, for what I need to get done, personal business wise. Uh, tomorrow, Thursday and Friday of this week is not gonna work. I can come in and still do. Maybe a couple of hours or something then Thursday for the ballot language.
I think.
And that type of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I need to get some other stuff.
I understand.
Uh, I have a lot in Tuesdays, pretty much for all day. Whatever we need to do there for, as far as mine.
Okay.
Uh, I have one ahead and done that. Uh, and then I'm trying to lighten my load on Thursdays for just a couple of hours or so if we need be.
Okay.
Uh, until I can get a couple of other things caught back up with having one guy out injured and another guy being sick. You know, that, uh, been a little bit rougher for me here the last few weeks.
Okay. And we'll only meet on Thursdays as needed.
Absolutely.
Okay. But we have from time to time found that we'll be here on Thursdays. But try to make it as needed and not any more than that.
Appreciate that.
You bet. You bet.
Good.
Yep. Okay. So Thursday, we'll set up an agenda for, um, right now, two items. Uh, the ballot question for online sales tax and then the final review of the senior tax credit application. If anything else comes up, I'll put it on there.
Perfect.
Uh, and that'd be at eight thirty and we'll make it a short, short meeting unless something comes up that we don't know about.
Sounds good.
Is that good? Now, I would, uh, you want recess till noon?
Make a motion on that and we just go to recess?
We can just re- recess.
Perfect.
And then if you need to make calls to Roden Bridge or whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, take care of that. I'm gonna go check email and.
Yep.
Leave my stuff here.
Couple things to make some calls.